Very did the public hearing. Lana, did you distribute that? FAF part two, Rick, you sent it to everybody, correct?
For for you.
For for you get off, you sent that to everyone.
Yes.
All right, ready to go.
Go do it for Rachel.
Yeah. Tom's on, where's Dennis?
Dennis is. I just sent to the agenda. Oh, my question. Yes.
Dennis is there, Tom's there, got four out of five.
Rachel just sent an email, I think she, it looks like she's on her way.
She's texting me too.
She's aware that we're meeting this.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
For.
Yes.
Federal. Okay, um, thank everyone for being here. This is the Village of New Falls Planning Board regular meeting of Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, 7:00 PM, Village Hall Fire Department. We have a business agenda. We have some administrative business tonight. We've got approval of the minutes. And we have a public comment section, a public hearing on a site plan for PB 2106, 23 Mill Rock Road. We have an application review of the site plan for PB 2106, 23 Mill Rock Road. A site plan of 85 North Chestnut Street, a subdivision PB 2103 Huguenot Street. And then we have a site plan introduction here for 2107 at seven Innes, Innes Avenue. So with that in mind, did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes? Then, Rick, you said there was an edit you wanted to look at on the minutes from last week?
I think you emailed me something that I changed as soon as.
Yeah. Okay. All right, because everything else looked fine to me. Any, everybody, any edits or changes, Tom?
No, it all looked good to me.
Yes?
It looks fine.
Okay, so, um, did you two have any edits to that? Everything fine on those?
Everything looked fine to me.
Okay, so I need then please a motion to approve the August 3rd, 2021 minutes.
So motion.
And I need a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion is carried, the minutes are approved. Village Board, UCPB or EPB updates, do we have anybody?
Bill Murray said he'll be back down later.
Okay, so we'll wait then for Bill Murray to come back and give us his updates on. So now we do have a time for public comments. We have, I want to ask Alana, there are some comments that do come online and through one of the messaging pieces. Alana, are there any comments that you have gathered from online or from YouTube?
Don't see anything, and I haven't received anything as of today.
Okay, so we're going to hold on, we're going to hold that open for them. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to any of the issues in public comments? No, okay, so then we're going to move on to the third item tonight, which is a public hearing on the site plan for PB 2106, 23 Mill Rock Road. The applicant is Lee Pizell Obak, and the zoning is in District R2. And this is a. Let me grab this real quickly. This is an application for a site plan approval for a 20 by 15 screened in porch addition and renovations to an existing single family dwelling located on 0.36 acre parcel along the Rock Road in the R2 zoning district. This is a type two action seeker. There was no referral to county that was required. And so now we will have the public hearing on that application. So I need please a motion to open the public hearing.
Some motion.
And I need a second, please. Okay, so the is open, all those that are here to comment on this specific application, is there anyone?
I didn't get anything in writing either.
Okay, so hearing none, the board needs a motion to close the public hearing.
Some motion.
And we need a second.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
Hi.
So the motion is carried to close the public hearing. So we're now going to move on to the application reviews. The first one is a site plan for PB 2106, 23 Mill Rock Road, applicant Lee Pizell Obak in the zoning district of R2. As we said, this is an application for a site plan approval for 20 by 15 screened in porch addition and renovations to an existing single family dwelling located on Mill Rock Road in the R2 zoning district. Type two action, no referral to county required, public hearing's been held. Advocate, come on up.
Hi, yeah, Lee's here.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Is there anything else that we need to hear from you regarding this?
No, I mean, unless there's other questions, the one thing I did want to point out, which we didn't talk about at the last meeting, was the fact that, you know, we're not disturbing any trees on, on the property. There are, if you look at the site plan, we have located and plotted out a number of, you know, fairly large trees that reside throughout the property. And I just wanted to point out that we're not disturbing any of those. The area that we'll be taking up with the, with the new addition is strictly a back lawn area, so that was really the only other thing I wanted to point out.
Okay.
That's good.
So do we have any further questions for the applicant?
No, I feel like I asked my questions last meeting, so.
Rachel, anything from you?
No, it's, it's a porch.
Yeah, I understand. I understand completely. Dennis, you or Tom, any questions for the applicant?
No, nothing for me.
Very good, so with that in mind, I have a motion here. There, we have a resolution of site approval that was provided to us in anticipation of this meeting, as we have no further items. What I am going to suggest is that we get a motion to approve this application based on items in this resolution, and I'm going to go through the resolution quickly here. We're going to go beyond the whereas and where it's located in the site plans. And the application proposed is located in R2, submitted a short EAF, and planning board determined that the application was administratively complete, determined referral to Ulster County Planning Board was not required. Planning Board classified the action type two action under the State Seeker Act, and we had a public hearing held tonight in person and via live stream, which those wishing to be heard were given the opportunity to speak. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Village of New Falls Planning Board that the proposed site plan approval for 23 Mill Rock Road, SBL number 86.128-1-8.100, to attach a 15 by 20 foot screened in porch on the back of the residence as shown on the site plan with the elevations dated July 9, 21, is hereby approved subject to the following conditions. The village is right to enter upon the property for purposes of inspecting and payment of all fees and final site plan as submitted. So with that in mind, I have a motion for us to approve this application with the resolution that I just read with the conditions that we also stated. So I need a motion then to approve.
So motion.
A second.
A second.
And all in favor of approving this application?
Hi.
Hi.
So your application is now approved and ready to go, and we'll just end that off right here while we can.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Lana, this is for you. So now we are moving on to the next portion where we have a site plan review for PB 2014, that's 85 North Chestnut Street. So come on up. I'm going to ask our attorney to give us a summary on this so that we can all be up to date. This application has been before you for a little while. It's an unlisted action on the speaker, and the board assumed lead agency at the June 16th, 2021 meeting. The board now may take the next seeker step, and that is to review the FBAF part two submitted by the planning board engineer, Brittany Larios, to identify the value of potential significant adverse environmental impacts. It was referred and a report back from the Ulster County Planning Board with three required modifications and one advisory comment that the board will have to take into consideration. They are presently before the ZBA. Have you filed the application?
Yeah, we just did a second running.
Okay, so before the ZBA with respect to a variance for a peaked roof height that is higher than that allowable, the ZBA is proceeding with that but cannot make a final determination until this planning board finishes secret. At that point, when secret is completed, then the ZBA continues work, then it would be able to come back to this board and with revised plans, the board could go ahead and review the revised plans. I had noted in a prior memorandum, and I think that Andy was given those specifics into quite a number of site land and special permit issues that should be addressed in the upcoming revised plans. And I think that's really all that needs to be done tonight. There are other issues with this application, you know, with RECs and portable housing, things along those lines, but I think for tonight it may be why it's just to concentrate on the FBAF part two review and make a determination of significance. Very good, thank you. So with that in mind, we are going to begin by looking at FBAF part two. There is a copy in the packets, there's also one that was sent electronically, and you'll notice it says that they're Chestnut Square. So we're going to go through this for for the benefits so that we can look through all of this. You know, extra copy?
Yeah.
This one's already been marked up, so I really don't want to give you this one, but when we're done, we'll, we'll be able to.
I think you did, I didn't.
No, let's, let's, let's move on here. So we're going to start with, the very first part is the impact on the land. The proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Yes is the answer to that one. And we're going to then go through the questions. The proposed, and you get a choice for each of the board members to, to have a relevance, a no, a small impact may occur, or a moderate to large impact may occur. If I read something that you disagree with, please feel free to interrupt me and to voice your concern so that we can have that noted and have a quick discussion as to how it should be listed. Do you got it?
Yeah, sorry, I was just asking if she could pull up the part one, because unfortunately my laptop's on battery, but it would be in the Google Drive.
Should I go to the drive or did we just get, that I think we got sent that, right? Or was that for the other one?
Should we link that email I sent?
No, no, not this one.
There was a short environmental assessment form that was done with the application, but you completed it full.
I did.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's not a. Maybe. But.
I find it so irritating that you don't, that it's the referral system, whether they give you the, the number and the letter and everything, and you don't have the document there to, you don't have the answer there in front of you, you have to go and refer to some other document, which at first I didn't even have, so.
So if you search for 20-14.
Okay, so we're going to go through the part two.
Yes, all right, this isn't super important. That's, well, maybe we'll just have the site plan up, that's useful.
Okay, so here we are, let's get started here. The proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. No small impact may occur on that one. Proposed action may involve construction on slopes 15% or greater, no. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet, which is a no. The proposed action may involve excavation removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material, and that's a no. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases, no. The proposed action may result in erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation, no, and then the proposed action is maybe located within a coastal erosion zone, which is no.
So how long is the construction then?
Andy, you want to address that?
Eight months.
Oh, okay.
You got it?
Is it, is it going to be taller or the same height as zero place?
P of the A is going to be the same height as the top, so what?
Of zero place, so we got the same height.
Yeah, and they have above that, they have that little tower.
Right, so it's 44 feet, is that correct? And then the, 47?
44 foot, 7 inches.
Okay, and the regs allow for 40 feet, so they're going to be going to the ZBA for a variance on four feet. So the second part is impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in modification or destruction or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site, that is a no. So then we're going to move on to number three, impacts on surface water. Proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes, that is yes. So looking at this, as we go through this, if everyone can please follow along. Looking at item A is a no, proposed action may create a new body of water. B may result in an increase or decrease of over 10% or more, 10 acre increase, decrease in the surface of any body of water, is a no. C, proposed action involving dredging, no. Action may involve construction within or joining freshwater tidal wetland, no. Likewise, on E, it is a no. F is a no, proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water. G is listed as no. The H is listed as no. We're still with stormwater discharge leading to siltation or the degradation of receiving body waters, water bias. I is no. J is no, involving application of pesticides or herbicides in a rainy body of water. And then the proposed action may require construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities, which is a no. Any questions on any of those?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm a little confused if all of these are listed as no, why this was checked as yes, this, this section, what, what are the impacts on surface water?
Rick, you want to cover that one? I mean, it's going to affect. I, I didn't prepare this FBAF, so.
Yeah, Dennis, Larry said, but I mean.
So, so what are the impacted bodies of water? Is there a stream that's running?
There is a stream that runs next to their, the area where they are at.
It's behind the place, there's a stream that goes along the rail trail, and sometimes it appears on the other side of the rail trail.
Right, but it's, it's more of like a temporary, it's seasonal.
Yes, and, and, and that's part of the reason that, that is a yes, it's not a consistent large body of water that, that would be impacted.
Right.
To a great degree beyond what's listed here, but, but there is a stream there. And also I realized that that column that's checked is not just no, it's either no or small impact. So it could be a small and true with respect to one or more of those.
Yeah.
I didn't do it, I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah.
Typically, when we do ours, a lot of times, not always, but a lot of times, put a little arrow on the ones that we think are small, but it's no, but I don't, I don't know what.
So maybe I, I would have a small arrow.
Correct.
Yeah, it goes into the watershed, I mean, it's, and there's usually water there.
Um, correct, and these, these impacts though may be small as opposed to, to, to large impacts, for instance, even H, the star, stormwater discharge may lead to siltation. It, it may, but it's, it's going to be a very small impact on, on that small body of water.
Right.
And there's, there's no additional pavement here, right? Like, from the existing site?
No, we're actually decreasing the pavement slightly.
Okay.
Okay, so let's move forward then to the impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or aquifer. And the engineer listed that as no, meaning that they do not believe that it will result in a new, in additional use of the groundwater, or that it will not have the potential to introduce contaminants to the groundwater or an aquifer.
It's, 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 it's that asphalt over the entire, the main concern was that with auto repair, that you put oil and other sorts of things are in tanks underneath it sometimes, is that correct or not?
No, there's no tanks below there.
There's no tanks below there with anything in it, or?
Nope.
Right, that, that was a concern in the, the zero places, because at one time there were tanks, but that was all cleared up, so this place, no.
This place there weren't any.
Correct. It actually was a auto parts store before it became.
Right, but they didn't do oil changes or anything like that.
No, no store them, it's nothing to boil around.
So the next is an impact on flooding. And it talks about the proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. There are no lands that are subject to flooding in that immediate area, so that is listed as no. So the next part is impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source, which would include, as they list down there, more than 1,000 tons a year of carbon dioxide or 1,000 tons per year of PFCs, and it goes on to list those, and the number of pollutants, and some as being hazardous pollutants of 25 tons per year or more. So in looking at that, the engineer has listed no on, on that one as well. The next one is impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna, and they have answered yes to this one, so. In reviewing this, we're going to look at whether you believe that it is a small impact or no impact, or whether you believe it is a moderate to large impact that may occur as a result of construction. So going through this, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or federal government that used the site or found on, over, or near the site. That is listed as being a small impact. The proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government. And that again is listed as no or a small impact. And these are, they're talking about the rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed. The proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government that used the site or are found on, over, or near the site. The proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern and conservation need as listed by the New York State or federal government. The proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national natural landmark to support the biological community it was established to protect, and that is listed as a no or small impact. The proposed action may result in the removal of or. The proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community. Proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy or use the project site. That's listed as a small or no. The proposed action requires the conversion of more than ten acres of forest, grasslands, or any other region or locally important habitats. The proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational projects only involves use of herbicides or pesticides, and that's listed as no, and there are listed as being no other impacts on that. On section eight, impact on agricultural resources, it's listed as no, as there are no agricultural resources on that.
So is there a landscape plan that showed what they were going to be using, whether they were using pesticides or not?
Yes, the landscape plan, and it actually went in front of the chief tree commission last month, and they approved it.
So the next is the impact on aesthetic source resources. They listed this as no. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. It's not different or in sharp contrast to the current land uses given its location.
Historically, this has some similarities and dissimilarities from the net zero.
Correct.
Certainly, this board found that there was potentially significant adverse effect, expected visual effect from the trail.
Correct, so proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. That would that will the rail trail and also from the historic huguenot. So I'm going to have to actually disagree on the impact of aesthetic resources unless that is yes. Proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource given its location. Is there any discussion? Do you feel that it's a small impact or a moderate to large impact?
I think it's small.
It's zoned as this gateway district, so. Let's match the.
There's super stewards across the street, and then there's the.
Yeah.
But thinking in the other direction as well.
Other direction is a different story.
So Tom, any comment? Just go ahead and mute yourself there, buddy.
I would say a small impact. I mean, just, you know, I guess the height is the only consideration, but based on what's there now, it's not. I mean, if anything, it's going to be more in line with the aesthetic of what that street is meant to be. So it just may be that it's, it may be more visible because it's taller from certain vantage points, but I would go with small.
Okay. The proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. I believe that's to be a small impact. Proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, seasonally screened by summer foliage, but visible during other seasons. True, because it's small, but from the, from the rail trail as well.
You can see it from church street too.
And those are going to be small impacts. The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, no. Recreation or tourism-based activities, yes, but it would be a small impact, and in fact, it may be visibly an improvement. The proposed action may cause a diminishment, diminishment, pardon me, a of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource, and I would say that that is no impact on that. There are similar projects visible within the following distance to the proposed project. Zero to one half mile, yes, project being zero place, which again would be a small impact, and there really are no other impacts. So moving on to item ten, the impact on historic or and archaeological resources. Items A, B, A and B are listed as moderate to large.
He submitted a corrected version.
I got it.
For item ten? Ah, yes, I see, I see.
That's when we received the letter from Parks. He filled it out before we got the letter from Shippo.
Okay.
Said no impact, and then he changed it.
Okay, so.
I'm not sure that Shippo takes into consideration very local. They don't always take into consideration very local types of things such as the rail trails. But, you know, I I don't know that we should always rely upon Shippo saying no impact to be no impact on any potential historic or archaeological, there's ones that they don't have that they're interested in. Many times you can rely upon that, but the same it's not necessarily one issue. But I think you should pay, in order to take a hard look at it, take your own independent analysis, which may end up to be the same thing.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that the director shows that you're taking a hard look at any.
Thank you. So let's move then to number ten, the impact on historic and archaeological resources. Proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historical Places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. Does everyone understand that? It's quite a mouthful.
Just also for consistency. I don't know where this sits exactly with respect to their start distance versus net zero. Net zero, this board found the distance between that and their start distance was not substantially contiguous to that, given the EAF workbook, DEC guidance as to what is or is not substantially contiguous, and we probably spent two hours on that.
I remember that two-hour discussion on what substantial contiguous net.
But it ended up to be that it was not substantially contiguous.
And this is.
I don't know what this is.
This is actually a bit farther away. It's across the street from net zero, and it abuts the rail trail, and then on the other side of the rail trail, what is the building that's there?
Sylvia's house.
Sylvia's, that's right. So it's not substantially contiguous to. So we don't have to have that discussion for two hours. It's a really good thing. So I would say that it has a very small impact, so we do agree with the applicant in that one. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Shippo Archaeological Site Inventory. And I have to say that it doesn't, as you come down from the, from Sylvia's house, from the, what is the name of her business?
Androgyny.
Androgyny, thank you. So as you come down from Androgyny, you move towards the corner, and beyond that corner would be the historic area. And as you look towards Androgyny, to the left of it, there is the baseball field. So it's not really substantially contiguous to any of those locations. So unless I have an objection, I'm going to put that it is no or small impact. See, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site not listed in the Shippo inventory. So there is, it's no impact. There are no other impacts from what I can tell. None of the items were listed as moderate to large, so we don't need to go through item E. Moving on to eleven, impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. The only recreation resource would be the rail trail, and as I understand, there is a provision for you to give access through your property to the rail trail. Is that correct? Okay, so that would be listing no. If you want to even look at some of these elements that are involved here for just a moment to read through them yourself, to if you have any question, we can certainly come back and circle around to that. The impact on critical environmental area, proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area, and no, it does not. The impact on transportation. You listed no, and I think that we need to go through the impact on transportation to get a better determination, just as a board. Projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network. Did NISOT send anything that indicated what the traffic flow is going to be through that area as a result of this project?
They didn't ask for any of that. They're only concerned with the movement, with the light coming in, and they did want the one-way in flow. That was requested, but they never requested anything.
Okay, have you done any volume studies?
We, I mean, we could generate, you know, right from the book, what this type of building would generate as far as trips.
Again, for consistency, when that zero came in, the board didn't require that zero to provide a traffic study, because study by the. Let's take it at the time, and this is different, but it's some similarities.
True, much smaller number of housing units and a much smaller retail footprint. But it could have a small impact or could have a moderate to large impact. Any discussion from the board on that?
Well, John, they just put the traffic light there for the new Stewart gas station. I can't see where there's going to be a lot more traffic, and it's a well-used highway, Route thirty-two, so I can't see this having much of an impact at all.
I think their concern is impact as generated from its final use of the number of retail spaces and the number of dwelling units, and with those add substantially to it, I think is the idea behind that.
Well, it might be small, but that's about it.
We have one person for small on that.
How many, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this, I don't, how many apartments are there going to be, and how many stores?
Well, two-bedroom, three-one-bedroom, and then.
What's that?
Four stores and fifteen apartments, is that what you said?
Small stores, forty-four square feet total.
I mean, obviously, it's going to add something to the traffic, but I don't know how much. I don't know how much traffic that represents.
Typically, in order to take that kind of hard hook, if you're, you haven't been presented by the applicant with numbers as to how many cars are going to be generated. The businesses may depend upon what type of businesses they're coming in, some are high-traffic and some are low-traffic. So it's typically to take a hard hook, you need to have some data from at least the applicant, even if you don't hire your own plans or traffic. But you can make the determination based upon the number of trips, peak hours, the typical things that a traffic engineer would look at, and provide you with that. So you could then make the determination as to the significance of it.
So I, I, I think that's something that we want to look at just because of the confluence of roads that are right there, and that the roads don't line up, and with your neighbor generating traffic as well, I think that getting a traffic study is going to work, so I'm going to put that it's going to have a moderate impact on that.
Yeah, I also agree with that, and I think that with the Empire Trail, the rail trail.
You get Dennis. You would just please mute. Thank you.
I think it would be useful to have some data about how many cars are expected to be coming in and out.
Okay. So then the next one is going to be the proposed action may result in the construction of paved parking area for five hundred or more vehicles. That's no. Action will degrade existing transit access. That would be a small impact. May.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, please.
So is it going to be one way going in from Mulberry Street and then going out onto thirty-two, or is it going to be the other way? So they're going to go in on thirty-two and then come out on Mulberry? Okay.
Now, is there going to be any opportunity to prevent them from turning left onto Mulberry and then entering into the residential area?
Put a no-left turn sign.
Yeah, I'm turning left on Mulberry.
Yeah.
And if there's any increase in traffic, if they turn left. They would end up in the residential area.
They would take a loop around and come up.
Yeah, with zero place, they can do that. Now they can do that.
People do that anyway.
Yeah. Because I don't like it, that means it's not going to happen. Yeah, I just don't want to try not to add to the the burden that they have to bear for development in the, on thirty-two. The proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations. I think that's going to be actually no impact effecture. Proving those, and with the rail trail access and with the bike lanes, and you are going to be providing some bicycle accommodations in terms of.
Blank racks and a sidewalk on thirty-two.
Okay.
That's great. Is there going to be a bridge over the, to the rail trail?
Sort of. It doesn't really need a bridge, it just needs like a over.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's what you.
That's what I'm looking at right here. Because I don't know, I still don't know what's happening with the bridge. Is there a place?
Don't know either. That's not.
Got to see that. Proposed action may alter the present pattern of movements of people or goods. I think definitely the proposed action may, by setting people coming out and turning left on Mulberry to avoid getting back on thirty-two or to avoid the traffic and the light crossing the street.
Oh, so you're saying they would cut.
They cut through your they would come into your.
Avoid the light. Oh, oh, God.
Wait, so where they're.
What I'm saying is that they will be at your location, and then when they exit out, rather than turn right, go to the stop sign, wait, turn right, hit the stoplight again, they may turn left, go through.
To Broadhead?
And turn left.
At Broadhead, because they can't keep going past Broadhead.
Right. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you have to, there's a sharp turn there, there's a stop sign, that wouldn't make sense.
So where would they be cutting through to go where?
Or do you think that they'd be cutting through, like cutting through this parking lot to avoid the light in front of the stewards?
No, they would, well, to avoid the light at the stewards.
There are three stop signs to avoid the light. There's three stop signs to avoid that. That's what that would be doing. That's what that would be doing.
I understand, this is something that, that, that I consider is, again. Trying to keep commercial traffic out of a residential neighborhood. And if there are larger trucks that are, are there delivering goods and services. Inventory, things of that nature, where they come out, turn left, and then head into the residential area. So just thinking of how that would impact the residential area, trying to prevent any impacts that we can from that occurring, so.
I mean, that can happen at the shop that's currently there.
I understand.
Is there a way, is it possible to put a no-left-turn sign at the, at the exit of the parking lot, so this is, if you're in the parking lot, you can't turn left?
And one, one of the ways to address it is to ask, in addition to the traffic council that has asked us earlier, is to ask that traffic engineer to address. Commercial traffic coming to the site and any suggested improvements in order to mitigate those impacts.
Yeah, we can do that. And I, I agree, I mean, they're going to, people are going to cut through, I'm just trying to figure out why, how that would help them, if it would help them, they're doing.
It, it, it may not help them, but. Having dealt with drivers and dentists can attest to this too, that. They frequently will, will do things which, on the surface, make no sense.
Yeah.
John, actually, traffic engineers study those types of things, what people will do in order to avoid certain. Traffic restrictions, like traffic lights, stoplights, stop signs, things like that, you can also ask them to address. Whether or not there would be a problem with cutting through based upon how people's driving patterns are. And address that issue as well.
Yeah, we can, we can. Okay, so we're listed as, as a moderate.
John, John, I'm pretty sure there's a weight, I've seen it when I run past it, there's a weight restriction. So, and I don't hold me to it, but it could be something like three ton. So that's a six, 6,000 pounds, most of your delivery trucks are going to be 33,000 GBW or more. So all you have to do is give these guys tickets and then they're going to go there.
Good point. Let's, let's look at the study, look at that there are ways to prevent them from, from doing that through the traffic study. So moving then on to item 14, impact on energy. They've listed it as having a. The proposed action may cause an increase in use of any form of energy as a yes, will require a new or an upgrade to an existing substation. Small impact, the proposed action will require the creation or extension of. An energy transmission or supply system to serve more than 50 single, and that's no. Proposed action may utilize more than 2,500 milliwatt-hours per year of electricity. Small. Proposed action may involve heating and or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of building area when completed, it's not even 100,000 square feet. So that's a no as well. So moving then on to the impact on noise, odor, and light. They listed yes with that, the proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. The proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulations, small impact. But that's a small number of, of. Housing units, may result in blasting, which is a no, may result in routine odors for more than one hour a day. Small to no. On that, proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties. So that one is listed as, as a small impact. With your, your lighting studies, you're using downward-facing lighting, lighting. And trying to be dark sky compliant, I understand.
Right, they're all down shielded and provided a photometric plan showing.
Sometimes the planning board has had a condition saying that they can't be any more than point 01. They can make that determination with whatever light tells them if you. Usually that's considered sufficient for.
Okay.
I think that was also required, that zero.
I, I'm sure it was. So I, I've listed that, that's something we're going to look at. And then we have the proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions. Given that Stewart's is there now. I can't see that, that it's going to be brighter than Stewart's. Next one is impact on human health. Looking at that, they listed as a no. Proposed action is located within 1,500 feet of a school, is it within 1,500 feet of the, of the kindergarten and day school that is in the Reform Church?
Probably within 1,500 of multiple schools.
Okay, so we're going to go from no to yes on this, and we're going to go through that. So we need to, to, to figure that out, so we're going to put that as moderate, just because I want to get that figured out, if you're within that distance.
So what's, what's the impact we're trying to?
It's actually may have impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Both during the. Construction and then following.
You'd have to identify the contaminants if you're concerned about dust and things during construction, that might be something that they can have certain mitigation efforts that they can put forward to. The operation of mixed use certainly doesn't have anything inherent in it, it's not.
Yeah, there's a dust control plan, we can add that to the road control plan for construction.
Perfect. Side proposed action is currently undergoing remediation, no. Completed emergency spill remediation or completed environmental site remediation on or adjacent to the side of the proposed action, so. Behind. The current business that you have there, restoring oil, transmission fluid barrels, or any nature?
No, that's all inside the garage and it gets pumped out regularly.
Okay, all right. The proposed action may affect institutional control measures put in place to ensure the site remains protective of environmental health, that's no. Adequate control measures in place to ensure that future generation treatment or disposal hazardous waste will be protective of the environment, there will be none. Construction or modification of solid waste management facility. That's, that, that's a, a management facility, that's not just trash cans. So action may result in unearthing of solid or hazardous waste, no. Result in increased rate of disposal, processing solid waste, small impact. May result in excavation or other disturbance within 2,000 feet of a site used for disposal, no. A proposed action resulted in migration of explosive gases from a landfill site, no. Proposed action may result in release of contaminated leachate from the project site, and that is no. Moving on to the last page, two sections in here, consistency with community plans. Proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans, that's listed as no, I, I tend to agree because the, the plans in that area are for. A mixed-use development with retail.
They need a variance, so their plan is not consistent with the zone.
You're right. Okay.
Certainly it's not consistent with the zoning and planning.
Okay, let's take a look here at these things. Components and maybe different from sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns, no. Will cause a permanent population of city, town, or village to grow by more than 5%, no. Inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans.
I think you may have skipped C.
Did I skip C?
Yeah.
A proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations, well, that one, yeah, because you're going to need the. The, the variance on that one. Proposed action, thank you for catching that, I appreciate it. The proposed action is inconsistent, inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans. No. Proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure or is distant from existing infrastructure, and that's no. The proposed action is located in an area characterized by low-density development that will require new expanded public infrastructure, no. Proposed action may induce secondary development impacts, residential, commercial development not included in the proposed action. Probably a small impact, I mean, there, there will be some, there may be some building next to or adjacent to or additions to things. So then, community character, proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character, listed as no. Let's look at that, replacing, eliminating existing facilities, structures of historic importance. Creating demand for additional community services, schools, fire, police, and fire. That would be small at best, so going through this, that would be a small at best. Proposed action may interfere with the use and enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources, no. Again, it may actually enhance it, proposed action may displace affordable or low-income housing in an area where there is a shortage of such housing. No. Actually, it's inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character, no. Proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape, so that kind of. That covers it all there, so what we need to do is. Determination of significance, and because we had some items here. That. We needed further answers on so that we listed as a moderate impact. That would. Qualify it for a. Having a significant impact, let's see, so reading this part three. Based on the analysis, the lead agency must decide whether to require an environmental impact study. Statement to further assess the proposed action or whether available information is sufficient for the lead agency to conclude. That the proposed action will not have a significant adverse environmental impact. By completing the certification, the lead agency can complete its determination of significance, so that's what we wanted to do here.
So if I might, please, in addition to what the secret regs provide and forms provide, which is either a choice right now between negative declaration. Which you really can't do at this point in time, because there may be some significant, that you need some more information on. Or since there may be some, you can go to a positive declaration, however. There's also a third alternative that's recognized by, say, an opponent created by the courts. Which is what's known as an expanded part three EAF, which is that you don't make that determination of significance right now, you put a pause on that. You get some additional information from the applicant, and potentially additional modifications to the plan. To mitigate those potential impacts, and they've already said that they're going to put together dust. Plans with respect to construction that would mitigate that issue that you identified, they're going to give you traffic information. That will allow you to make some further decisions on traffic. And I can't remember the other issue that there was, which was one other issue, so what is, would be typical in these cases where they aren't. By your own discussion, they are not very significant adverse environmental impacts that have been identified, and they may easily be mitigated by changes in the plan. Normally, you don't make a determination of significance at this point, put a pause, ask the applicant to submit whatever information they want to convince you changes in the plan. And information to convince you that they have mitigated the potential impacts that you have got.
Okay, any discussion on, on that, from that suggestion?
That makes a lot of sense to me. If these can be mitigated with. The information that we're still meeting, then it makes sense to me to delay it. Or, or rather, have an expanded part three.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm also leaning towards the expanded part three, I think that. The impacts are not significant enough to make a. Positive declaration right now, how, go through the full EIS, but there's more, more information, it would be nice to have.
Okay, Rachel?
It sounds good to me. There's no, no wildlife here, that's this particular part of it.
And it doesn't preclude, but in the future, when they come back to things, and let's say you say, well, you didn't really mitigate that. At that point in time, you can give it a positive declaration, have a narrow scope as to whatever impacts there are, and go through the process like that, so it truly does. Not making that determination yet, and giving the applicant an opportunity to show that they can mitigate those issues that he raised. And if they do, then you can go to a negative declaration, if they don't, you go to a positive declaration.
Okay.
Well, I know with the, with project, and with, with Zero Place. There were times when. There, you know, when there were issues during the construction, you know. There were fumes and there was some. They hadn't had the silt fences weren't properly installed at one point. So I feel like with those things, it's a matter of checking on it while it's being built to make sure that. Or, or, you know, I don't know, have some better plan in place to begin with. So if that's what they're going to come up with, I'm for it, they're going to come up with the. Plan to mitigate the fumes and the dust from the construction, that's really important. But. It's not like they need a.
Okay.
In Zero Place, they, they just did a very long part three, they didn't, they didn't get through any five-impact.
They didn't do environmental impact, except their expanded EAF part three was roughly.
Right.
Right, it was.
So to make sure I have, my list says to a traffic study that talks about the cars and increasing traffic. And the flow of traffic, any suggested improvements to intersections or, and to talk about the no-left-turn possibly onto Mulberry. Dust control plan for.
On, on the traffic, there was, had to deal with commercial traffic to the site.
Commercial routes.
And also ways in which people might. I'm not familiar enough with that area, but John talked about concern of shortcuts through the air, and after your traffic gets in your address. Whether that's a real possibility, or, and if so, how to address it.
Right.
I have a question too, how's it going to be heated, is it going to be fast or? Oil or?
No, actually, um, there is a note here. That they, you've advised as EBA that you're going to be modifying the plans. In response to the Ulster County Planning Board's required modification to use heat pumps. Which require compressors to be located on the ground and screening, rather than just.
Right, so that's actually evolving a little bit as we speak, because the county came back with that they wanted. Basically, some more greener practices, us to consider more green practices such as heat pumps and solar panels. So the, the mechanical engineer for the building is currently looking at some different options.
Okay, I feel that's important.
And then lighting was the other thing on my list, I mean, the. Yeah, your, your lighting plan already covers that.
Right.
It is, that's something that we, that I remember now in looking through, and that it was, was covered, a lot of the. Being night sky.
Mitigated by. By the issues that you already have in there by. Night sky-friendly, downward-facing, and also no. Travel past the point 01.
And we could do point 01B, it's pretty difficult to do that on a site this small. And to not spill over onto the road, that's kind of the thing that I was just saying, why can't light be on the road?
Whoever you have in the light does have a narrative as to what you're doing, impacting the potential impact of light off-site. And that's important, consider it.
Yeah, I would be more concerned about the light on the. Yeah, I would be more concerned about the light on the, like residential properties like um. That house across the rail trail.
The back side.
Yeah, the back side.
Yeah, the back side's going to be lit up any map.
Yeah. Yeah, street, um, it does spill over a little bit on the rail trail, which I thought was. Could be a good thing, it definitely doesn't go onto any residential property, so we could talk about that.
Okay.
Um, I guess the, the only other thing that maybe could be included is the um. Impact on, on surface water, so you know, you talked about silk fences and. Talking about some, some construction plan into. Does the impact on that stream during construction?
Um, yeah. So with that in mind, um. What we're going to then ask for is a. Help me hear what were, what were the, the correct terminology, uh. Expanded part three, thank you. Um, I was going to call it the extended part three, but expanded part three. Uh, so I would like then a motion to request from the applicant an expanded part three EAF. And a second, second. In favor?
Hi.
Oh, we will get a, an expanded EAF from you. Um, Rick, how does this affect them with their appearance before the ZBA?
The, the ZBA cannot take any action until there has been a completion of secret. So you complete secret either by, after this, they come back with an extended information. In line with the expanded part three and then you look at that and then you say, well, now they're mitigated. The issue is giving you enough information that's not as significant as you thought. There may changes to the plan that have mitigated those impacts that were of concern. And therefore you could give it a negative because now it has no significant adverse environmental impacts. If they can't do that, then even go toward a positive declaration, but now that wouldn't be done until you find a secret.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
It behooves the applicant to come up with substantive things to make that determination of a negative declaration.
How soon do you think that you'd be able to get this information together? Just so that we don't delay you and your move forward on, on the project.
And yeah, the traffic engineers. Schedule, as soon as. I guess three, three or four weeks.
Okay.
To be able to get it coming together.
So a lot, let's reach out to the applicants and. As the, the week goes by and just, just check to see when they think that they're going to have some of this information. And then get them back on the uh, agenda as soon as possible.
Yeah, in the meeting before.
I mean, the meeting for the first planning board meeting in September is the seventh.
Right.
And the zoning board is the fourteenth.
Right, so that's definitely where we're.
You're going to aim, aim for the seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Also, you have. You're putting together revised plans anyway. Deal with a lot of other issues, so those can also be submitted and discussed by the board, even though seeker hasn't been.
Right, so as part of that, um, that June middle, we did, we spent a quite a bit of time going through you and Ashley's comments.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, so, okay, so that's all, that's all in there, if you need anything else, must be, we tried to really address all that.
Okay, good. Okay, and he'll, he'll get back with me on, on what goes on with that, what determines and then. Uh, we're going to set you then for being here on September seventh and we'll see if we can get the seeker completed and then get you moving on this project.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are now moving on. Did I think any? Thank you. Uh, so now moving on, um, we are moving to the. Uh, next item, which is item number three subdivision, K B twenty one oh three, one ninety one, one ninety three Huguenot Street, applicant Holly Hasbrook. Um, Ms. Hasbrook, are you with us on Zoom tonight?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Um, and do you like to introduce yourself, sir?
Christopher Hasbrook.
Okay. So. The summary on this, um. If we want to look at this, uh. If we can have our. Attorney give us a review on it, but the basic parts are that. It's a two lot subdivision, uh, application before the planning board for, uh, previously. Representing, Ms. Hasbrook is representing the estate of Richard Hasbrook, confirms that they will be requiring two variances in order to achieve the subdivision submitted. Um, there were a list of items that our attorney requested. And you went to the ZBA. Uh, to receive a variance, so um. Um, Rick, you want to give us a little more information on this?
Oh, it, as you said, it's a simple two lot subdivision. It needed a initially three variances. Um, the ZBA, as I understand it, is poised to grant two of them.
They granted it.
They granted it?
Yeah, they granted two.
Well, we did this of them coordinated?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my, my apologies. So they granted two of the variances, the third variance, the side yard setback. The applicant decided to modify the plan slightly to move the subdivision line so as to avoid the need for that variance and so the CBA could not address that last variance. So we're here with a revised. Um, subdivision plat that has modified the subdivision line from that previously identified before. And we need to go through, um.
Their FBAF part two.
FBAF, uh, in order to close out the, uh, decision. I think that when you go through the FBAF, um. Virtually everything is checked on the box, no. Um, except for two items, I believe. And the reason for that is that you're really looking at the environmental impact of drawing an imaginary line on a tax. Um, so that there really isn't any significant adverse environmental impacts. Two would be impacts effectively just as an impact, but clearly it's small to none. And so, um, you should go through the FBAF, that should be done very quickly rather than the last one, because it's very few, very little things to talk about. Um, and then you can make what I think is, I would recommend is being a negative declaration if we then close out secret.
Okay, and then we have uh, one remaining issue that we will, we'll cover here after we go through that. In regards to the, uh, the issue with the, the, the survey and the options that are available. Regarding the, the survey, but let's, um, let's go through seeker right now, let's go through this FBAF. So everyone did receive a copy of the FBAF, uh, part two. And uh, first part is the impact on land, proposed action may involve construction or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site, uh, no. Then, um, number two. All right. Impact on geological features, proposed action may result in the modification or destruction or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms in the site, the stones, minerals, fossil caves, et cetera. Uh, that is no impact on surface water, proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface waters bodies and that is also a no on number three. Number four, impact on groundwater, proposed action may result in newer additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer and that also is no. Um, item number five, impact on flooding, proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. And that is a no, uh, proposal, uh, excuse me, impacts on air, which is number six, proposed action may include state regulated air emission sources, no. Finally, we come to number seven. And impact on plants and animals, proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna. Uh, no, impact on agricultural resources, may impact agricultural resources, no. Nine, impact on aesthetic resources, which is also a no. And then we get to number ten, impact on historical and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historical or archaeological resource. And it is listed as yes, and so let's go through those. The proposed action, uh, may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site or district which is listed on the National State Register of Historical Places. Or that has been determined by the commissioner of the N Y S Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. Very small impact because yes, it is in itself a historic.
It is special place, so.
Yeah, and in fact, from an environmental point of view, really would be done with that because again, all we're talking about is drawing a line on.
Matches, exactly.
Right, they're not building anything there, they're just dividing up a piece of property.
Correct. So then item B, proposed action may occur wholly. Or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Shipoh Archaeological Survey Site Inventory. The proposal. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site, not included in the New York Shipoh Inventory and that one is no as well.
Yeah, and actually if on E, that actually should not have been checked by us.
Okay.
This is the one we did, got to really deal with if there were answers moderates law, which will work.
So there we go, and then as far as other impacts, it's listed as no, so then E should not be checked, um, so we'll disregard that.
Right.
Impact on open space and recreation, proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open spaces plan that is listed as no. Impact on critical environmental areas is listed as no. Um, impact on transportation as well as no, impact on energy is a no. Uh, the impact on noise, odor and light is no, impact on human health. Uh, proposed action may have an impact on human health and exposure to new or existing source of contaminants is a no. Excuse me, you're just in. And then consistency with community plans. Uh, proposal. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans and it is listed as yes.
Is that because of the variance?
Okay. Uh, the proposed actions land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. Uh, no or small impact, proposed action will cause permanent population of the city, counter village uh, to grow by more than five percentages, no. Action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations, small impact again due to the need for variances. Um, proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans, which is a, uh, small but causes again the need for the variances. Item E, proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure, which is a no. Uh, F, the proposed action is located in an area characterized by low density development that will require new or expanded public infrastructure. Which is a no, the proposed action may include secondary development impacts. Which is a no, and then finally, uh, H, other, there is a no. So then we have consistency with community character, which is listed as a no. So that gets us to the end of that, so now we need to look at based upon the items listed. Whether it is, um, a significant impact or no impact. Um, any conversation on that?
No impact.
Seems like no impact.
Yeah, I agree.
So then, um, we're going to need to get a. Uh, I will need to get a, um. Proposal, I mean, I need to get. A motion so that, uh, we have a determination of significance of having no impact.
So motion.
Negative declaration, I'm sorry, thank you, a negative declaration of the impact.
So motion.
A second?
Second.
And all in favor of the next?
Hi.
So, uh, you have completed your seeker, so you can go to the. Back to the ZBA and we have a final issue that we do need to discuss and we do need to resolve, um.
We've done this the last.
Yeah. They don't, okay. Oh, is that part, you're right, okay, thank you. Um. The, the, the last item that we need to discuss is the survey that is being used. The survey was completed by our, by a firm that is also representing the village, Britney and Larry. You just wasn't able to be clear. Um, by Britney and Larrys and, uh, they also represent the village. Uh, we requested that based upon the ethics laws that we have, that. There are, that they not be used, and so there are, are three options. Um, you can get a new surveyor for everything and they can do it from soup to nuts and just do everything. And Willingham can be, uh, the, the person who prepares the plat. The second option is that you get a new surveyor to simply modify the lines on the plat. Uh, and the preparation can be done by Willingham.
That's the, the small line adjustment that was. Done by Brittany and Larry's surveyor. Um, in order to avoid a third area or side yard, et cetera.
Is that thirty, do you need some more explanation on that?
No, I just, I do have a question though, um.
Well, let me, let me get to the third option.
All right.
Um. The, the third option is to keep the lines as they are, as they were previously done and, uh, go to the ZBA for a variance on that last item. And again, have the plat done by Willingham. The, 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 the point here is that you, you've got three options, but Britney and Larrys cannot be part of any of those three options.
The company as a whole, I mean, you throw them the whole, I mean, it's your contractor for you, but I mean, there's multiple divisions of that company.
As a whole, they are.
Britney and Larrys has been identified by the village as village engineers.
As, as, I'm sorry, as identified at, of, by the village as.
Engineers.
The village. However, we were not informed that, um. Um, that they could not be used until late on in the project. And we were also only told that. Um, they, we could, they could not be used if there was engineering involved and there was absolutely no engineering involved in this project whatsoever. Um, so.
Totally different division of the company.
That's what we understand, but they are listed as Britney and Larrys engineers and surveyors. Surveying is part of their, uh, business and you, they.
But I believe that, I believe the village has an obligation to notify us of that early on in the process.
Excuse me. I'm not finished yet and I would ask you to wait until I'm done, is that clear to you?
Yes, of course, I apologize. Yes, of course, I apologize.
So Britier and Larry's cannot represent you and represent the village.
Okay.
Cannot, period, end of story.
For months.
It doesn't matter.
No, 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 wait. For months, this board knew who the surveyor was for the project.
When they were identified as being the surveyors for this project.
We started back in January.
Excuse me, when they were identified as the surveyors for the project, our attorney came to us with this issue.
After those documents.
It doesn't matter if it was before or after.
Two things, one. This was noted at the very first meeting before the plan.
I know, just.
Secondly, there is no prior notification required, it's in the ethics code. Every consultant is on notice that they cannot be used by an app. And so they should not take on any plan. Doesn't require somebody to say that you're violating the ethics code.
Understood, understood, but we were informed that they could not be involved because of the engineer, they are the engineer for the village. No one ever said they cannot be involved because they're the, they're a surveyor as well. That was never the word, that was never even mentioned that they could not perform the survey.
It is correct, is that it was identified at the first meeting that Britier and Larry's could not be part of this.
No, it was determined the day after.
It was not even addressed at the first meeting. We were shocked when we found out from Alana the day after the meeting. That this was an issue, whereas the planning board had surveys to review months before and never even mentioned it.
Let's take a moment here. The ethics code violation is that they cannot represent you and the village. Then that's the end of the story. They simply can't, whether it was before, whether it was after, whether it was the first meeting or whether it was following the first meeting, they cannot. And that's the way it stands and that's what we are going to hold.
All right, so we are five thousand dollars into a six month project. You guys have these documents for months. We need to know how we can move forward.
You can use the data that was generated by them. And Andy Willingham can do the survey, he can sign off on the site plan, he can sign off on all of it. Britier, Larry's cannot.
Who is Andy, I don't know who he is.
May I speak, I talked to Andy Willingham today, he is not a surveyor, he cannot sign off on the plan. He cannot sign off on the survey, he is not a surveyor, he is an engineer. We would have to we would have to hire a new surveyor and start from scratch because.
You do not, and that's what I'm trying to get a word in edgewise here to explain to you. Is that you can use the data that was generated by them with another surveyor to get this done. Britier and Larry's is not going to be accepted as representing you and the board. And that's just, that's it, that's the long and the short of it.
That's not an option, that is not an option, I work with surveyors every day. Surveyors do not work off other surveyors' work. When I have a survey from a prior surveyor and I show it to a new surveyor, they start from scratch. They, because of legal reasons, they do not work off of somebody else's survey. That does not happen in this profession.
Thank you, the, the, the third option then is you can keep the lines as previous, you can go and get a variance. But Britier and Larry's cannot represent you, and that's, that's just the long and the short of it. And that's, that's all there is to it and we won't accept it.
The planning board said that they would accept the data information from that surveyor on a plan that Andy Willingham will put together as an engineer. But the, and you would be fine right now with that except that Brittany and Larry's just recently modified that plan with their surveyor. And that was improper. So the way to rectify that is that we give you an option to simply go back to the original Britier and Larry's survey data that was done before this board started reviewing the project. And we're allowing you to do that so you don't have to get a new surveyor. But you have to keep the same lines, you can't adjust them, Brittany and Larry's now stepping back into the picture in the middle of all this. So you'd have to keep the lines, that would require you to get the variance, that doesn't change the lines. You get the variance and therefore we could accept that with the variance note.
But that, I mean, that doesn't really make sense because the objective here is to have the least amount of variances. And, and, and you're saying that they can't sign as the surveyor anyway, so I don't understand how that solves.
And was that they would use the survey data and if there is simply a stamp from the surveyor eliminating the Britier and Larry's identification. But they have no involvement in this other than certifying that a survey work that they did prior to us being involved with this matter is being used. But Andy Willingham is actually preparing the plat. To, and it's under his name and seal that the subdivision plat would be prepared and filed. And the only thing that is different from the most revised plan is that Britier and Larry's again changed the lines and they can't do that. And so you have to go back to the same lines that are on a survey and just get a variance for that small.
Well, I spoke with Andy today and he said he could not sign the survey because he's not a surveyor.
Listening to me. I didn't say that he was going to sign as a survey. I said that the stamp of the surveyor could be on that subdivision plat that is prepared by, has Andy Willingham's box on it saying, I've prepared this using Britier and Larry's prior survey data. But he can't use some survey data that Britier and Larry's just put on there in the last week.
And it's the change that's causing the issue at this point. So if you need that change, then there are, it complicates matters, however, if you do not have that last change that was made by Britier and Larry's, then.
If Mr. Willingham could conclude why that change was made. What I'm saying is, Holly, was that last change to eliminate the need for variance?
Yes, that's exactly what it was, it was, it was made in the good faith of, of trying to achieve something that would cause less difficulty going forward with the Z B A. And it was a very, very, actually, it made a lot of sense to do it. Now, if we have to go back to Z B A, they may not approve it, you know, what, you know, what if they don't approve it?
Hold on a second, all right, so if, if, so we, we go back a step. We explain the information to Andy on what this was to Z B A claim they were not giving out variances like candy. That we as the applicant had some work to do to revise things and maybe work on our behalf to help them do what they needed to do, but they weren't just giving out variances for the sake of giving out variances. Before all this confusion happened, Holly worked with a surveyor and they were able to eliminate the need for a side variance, is that correct, Holly?
Yes.
So they worked to eliminate one, so we did some work. We were not beat up or punished by Z B A, but they said, hey, you know, you've got to do some work on your end. We're just not giving out these variances for the sake of giving out variances. So if we back up a step and we explain to Andy the need for this information. And if he could agree or concur or understand the reasoning of that under his own engineering drawing capabilities, I mean, we are trying to move forward with your assistance. We just had a nice visit with Z B A, we eliminated one, we thought, we got approvals on two. We need your help to move forward.
And that, that's what we're trying to do.
But with this change, you said we can't use that change because of the way it occurred. If this change.
But it's a violation of ethics goals for Britier and Larry's.
Okay, I'm saying is that if we explain the situation to another person who has nothing to do with the other organization. We explain why that was done to assist us with Z B A to eliminate the need for a variance. If this person would concur to that information on his own review.
I don't know what that means.
We initially proposed to have three variances.
Correct.
In the ability to work with the surveyor with the site plan and map, it was ability to change and not need by small modifications of a drawing. After Z B A saying for us to do some work, we were able to eliminate the need for one variance. Some modifications on the, you said plot or site model, okay, so I'm saying is that we back up a step, we have an independent review of what we got, we talk about that one other thing. Our goal is not to go back to Z B A and start over from scratch, we're trying to keep moving forward.
And you're saying that Andy Willingham would be signing off on that.
Oh, I'm saying, I'm asking, I'm asking you that, that you have an objection to that change. That change allow us to.
We have an objection to that change being done by Britier.
That's, that's, that's the issue.
What I'm saying is it, it knocked down a variance, we're just trying to not have to go back for variances. Because that would, we're going to circular pattern, we're not achieving anything.
Corey, the ones put the line on the map that removed the need for the third variance, like he marked up the map and.
I don't know.
How it wouldn't be possible.
I don't know.
Right? And then, because you're saying Britier and Larry's just put a line on it, they didn't go out there and do a whole new survey in order, so they just can't, Andy just look at where the lot would need to be in order for the third variance not to be required, then Andy just put the line on it?
If Andy is willing to do that, it is the applicant that's saying that Andy cannot do that.
I'm not exactly, I, I'm not a hundred percent clear. But what he said is he cannot sign as the surveyor. So maybe he can do it, I don't know, I'm not a hundred percent clear on if he could put a line on the survey.
If somebody other than Britier and Larry's that is adjusting that line is certifying to it, this board isn't going to have an objection.
Okay, well, I mean, now we're talking lines, we can, you know, we can understand and work with.
Anybody else?
It just can't be.
Well, they were our guy before they were your guy.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter, doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
This is late in the game.
Doesn't matter.
It's not.
It doesn't matter.
When Britier and Larry's put this together to submit a plan. They were village engineers at that point.
This was months ago, this was.
Doesn't matter.
Before that.
This was sixty years ago.
That's why we're allowing them to use the data.
But because they are currently, and it doesn't matter when they did it, because they are currently representing the, the village. They are not allowed by the ethics code to represent an applicant.
So there's two parts to the company, there's engineering.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
It's one.
One company, whether there are divisions in it or not.
Engineering and survey.
It's, it's one company and that one company.
So, all right, so to refresh, we we want to move forward. We meet with Andy, I don't know who Andy is, I mean.
It can be anybody, just not.
Just not Britier and Larry's.
So whatever was before that is acceptable, one thing you say got modified or changed.
By Britier and Larry's, yes.
I mean, it was used specifically to, at the request of Z B A. It was okay by them, so I'm saying is that your guys are the same team.
No, we are not, we, we work with each other, but we're not the same team. Wait, wait just a second here, the, here is the, the the long and the short, and then we need to move on, is that Britier and Larry's cannot have their name and their stamp on that.
Well, they can, they can, the, the surveyor can stamp the survey data, like it would be.
Yeah, the data, but they cannot.
We are cert, we are certifying it to the survey data owner. Everything else is done by.
By someone else.
So is that restarting over?
No.
What I'm saying is that.
I can call Andy tomorrow.
What I'm just saying is that we want to make sure that we can move forward, we don't want to start from scratch.
We understand, and you're not, they're not telling you have to start from scratch, what we're saying is that you can get someone else to do it completely, that's not an option for you. You can get someone to move the lines, it's not Britier and Larry's, that's an option, but that may not be possible. But hang on, but the third option is that if you want to keep that, the line where it is, you can have them certify the data. And then you can have another firm such as Andy Willingham to then complete the plat for you. And that way you don't have to go back and get another variance. But the point is that Britier and Larry's cannot represent you.
That's very clear.
And we.
So just this one last change, John? A return, just one last, just one last change. I mean, we're not going back to square one from six months ago for the first rung, just the last change.
Correct.
So you can.
Could you please clarify? Excuse me, I'm sorry, could you please clarify what you mean when you say certify, certify the data? I don't, I don't know what that means.
Numerous times, there are engineers who go ahead and prepare plans utilizing survey information from a surveyor, from a different entity than themselves. That is done all the time, right? And what happens is, is that on the plans, the survey information is noted as being provided by that particular engineer. Here, the engineer that signed off on it, if you get the gentleman's name, Jillo or something like that. His stamp on Andy's subdivision plat. Saying I certified to the survey information on this.
Then that's your only objection that we can do forward?
And then as to the change that he can certify to. Then you have another engineer or surveyor which you're saying you can't get, but you're now saying you're going to try to get. Andy Willingham to just make that mod, that last modification. That's modified by somebody other than that surveyor. The planning board doesn't have enough objection.
So you would have no objection to Christopher Zell stamping the survey as the surveyor? And signing this survey? If we do that, if we, if we have.
Saying that I certified that the, that the survey information other than this one change was done by me, that's not a problem, we said that from the beginning to try to accommodate you of utilizing survey information that was done before the application was submitted. But he can't certify something he didn't do, he didn't make that last change.
So what we have is good, we have to fix the last change, then we can move forward. So if we're in August moving forward, what else do we need to do for August, September, October?
Once you get that change and the plat certified, then you'll be coming back to the planning board with that. So that we can review it and we've done really everything else. And then we just had a public hearing.
Can that, can that be planned so we can mail those out?
Well.
So we can what?
So they can mail the, to the, Mr. Zell that they're talking about.
Not, can we mail out to the?
Yeah, you, yeah, the board can set a public hearing tonight.
And we're, we're going to do that, but we just need to get over this hurdle so that you're, you're aware of it, so that we don't come to the end of the public hearing. And then come to the point where you're, the expectation is that, that everything is fine, that we're going to pass the.
We'll find ways of resolving these other issues, we'd like to.
Yeah.
Do a public survey, we just don't want to lose time.
No, I, I understand that and we're, we're trying to help you here. And I apologize that I lost my temper with you, that, that was, I should not have done that. I, I should not have made the, the comment and then lost my temper, so I do apologize to you both.
The surveyor has, I mean, not presidents, but they were the original surveyor in nineteen sixty-four. They had knowledge of the, of the land. We had no idea this was going to be such a conflict and such a problem. We're just concerned because we're six months into it and we have other people from the state level watching this particular.
We understand. We understand.
Situation among the board, so
We understand, so
It's frustration and confusion.
What we're going to do now is we're going to set a date for the public hearing. A lot of what dates are available?
Um, there's September 7th, which is the first meeting in September, and then September 21st.
Would you have this information, uh, completed and available for a September 7th meeting?
I am not, I am not available, uh, September 7th. I'm actually going to be out of the country. So if someone else can represent the state, um, that's fine with me, but, um, it really doesn't give us that much time. Um, that's only, you know, about
Holly, we can do it later.
Do the 21st.
Yeah, they can set it to
We can, we can make it for September 21st.
Enjoy your vacation.
So then let's set this for September 21st.
Give us some extra time.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
But you do not object to Christopher Zell signing and stamping the survey? That's, that is what you're saying if we make that change?
We have identified it, that's correct.
In, in the manner that we have identified. And if you would like for, um, if you would like for that to be put in writing so that it's very clear, then, then I can work with our attorney to make sure that you get it in a written form so that it's, it's, it's very straightforward and clear.
So we need to vote to
So we're going to
Thank you.
To, uh, I need a motion to set the public hearing for September 21st.
Go ahead.
A second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. So we are now going to have the, uh, public hearing on the 21st. So thank you very much. We're now moving on to, uh, item number four, the site plan for PB 2107 Innis Avenue. Um, this is a habitation for a site plan to approve a change the use of two existing buildings, uh, total of approximately 4,000 square feet from office to educational, to art studios on a 0.6 parcel located along Innis Avenue in the B2 zoning district. Um, this is a type two action. The property, and this is unique. The property is located within 500 feet of State Route 20, uh, 208, but is exempt from referral under the agreement with the Elster County Planning Board if the, uh, following conditions are met. And, uh, Rick, do you want to go through those following conditions?
Yeah, and, and I have reviewed the plan for whether or not they comply. But these are the three things that the planning board must determine applies for it not to go to Elster County planning. An increase in parking is not required from what is presently utilized. Channelized access to a state or county roadway exists or is proposed. And finally, that any new site lighting that's proposed must utilize full cutoff luminaries and does not exceed IDA lighting levels.
Any questions? Why don't you give us a little bit about it? By the way, my dog and I walk by your school every day. Maggie that your, uh, kids love, who's, uh, at away at summer camp.
I thought you were familiar.
So, um, give us a little idea of, of what you're doing. And I, and this is the building that is across the street from the school.
Correct.
Where the, the kids are playing and, and, uh, recently it was painted and, uh, the fence was painted over there.
So when you initially started, when you were talking about what we're doing, you said there were two buildings. We're actually only asking for a change of use for one building, not both.
Okay.
We're asking for the change of use for the smaller, what we're calling the carriage house, um, which is back farther along the property. It's a little bit darker.
Okay.
Just for the one smaller building that we want to do the change of use.
So let's see here, um,
Could I jump in? Sorry, it's Rick Alfondre here. There's the main school. There's a small school on Elting. And then across from Innis, uh, across Innis, there's a, what was once many years ago, a house which has been an office building for 25 years. Behind that is the old carriage house which is very close to, um, the municipal parking lot. And was the home of Hudson Valley Abstract for 25 years or more. That's the building that we're talking about.
Got it, got it, got it. So it's, it's just, it's down the what, what's almost the driveway and then there's the path that
That's correct.
That's the path that we're talking about. Should be paved.
Well
Yeah.
It is, but, but it gives us an idea of where it is.
Yep.
Okay. Um, all right. So that's the, that's the one that you're looking for the change of use on instead of, uh, two buildings, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So it was, many years ago, it was child find. And then Lee Reinhardt, Vivian and John Wadlin bought the property. Uh, I'm imagining from Jed Reisner, who was a local architect who had lived in the house. The house became an office building, you know, decades ago. And the carriage house eventually became, after child find moved out, it became the offices of Hudson Valley Abstract, um, which essentially was an office building, small office building. They had offices upstairs and record storage downstairs. I'm intimately familiar with this property having designed, first of all, designed the renovations to the carriage house. And then, uh, in the early 2000s, moved into the big building where our offices were. And our daughters were attended Mountain Laurel from, um, nursery through eighth grade. And actually, Miss, Mr., uh, Preston Neal, who is, I think there, was their teacher. Um, and so our offices were in that building through, uh, sorry, I've lost the years. About 2010, uh, in the big building, in the, in the house. So the little building in the back, so Lee Reinhardt sold Seven Innis, which is the big, the house, which is now offices and the carriage house to Mountain Laurel several years ago. And they've used them as offices since, or leased them as offices since. And now would like to, um, move the sculpture studio to the first floor of that building. And knowing the school and knowing the property, essentially what they're doing is making room inside the school so that it's really a better school. There's not an intensification of the use, but rather a bit of breathing room for the school.
Good, so, um, as we did say, this is a type two action for Seeker. So, so we're not going to have to, to go through the Seeker program, uh, progress. Um, because it is located within 500 feet, we do need to have those conditions met which are, are stated here. Um, an increase in parking not required, uh, channelized access uh, to state or county roadway exists or is proposed. I think it does exist. Uh, and then new site lighting, which is the, the item that will probably be the, the most, um, problematic of the three. So at this point, what we are going to do is we're going to set a, a public hearing for you. Um, uh, Rick, do we need, what do we need to certify that, uh, the, uh, following conditions are indeed met by the applicant?
You have to ask questions and we send us on to you.
Yes.
Wow, that's just way too easy. I'm sorry.
I can just send those products in writing to them. And then also ask Cory to turn the thing, the determination over to us, too.
Okay.
I don't know if there's going to be a change in lighting, but there, uh, there is a light fixture in the little front canopy, which certainly we can look at and maybe cha, change it to full cutoff downlight. But there isn't any site lighting per se on that building. Probably should be from a safety perspective, but, uh, if anybody knows me, I'm uh, obsessive about full cutoff night sky friendly lighting. So if anything does happen, uh, we can make sure that it's perfect in that regard.
Oh, um, you're going to send in some information, Alana, and then have Cory certify on that course? Okay, then that'll be available then for the, uh, the next meeting, which will be, um, September 7th. So, um, would you be able to have that information, uh, to us by September 7th?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Yep, yep.
What I need then, uh, what I would like to have is a, um, motion to uh, schedule a public hearing for PB 2107, Seven Innis Avenue, Mountain Laurel Waldorf School for, uh, September 7th.
Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so your public hearing is set. Uh, Alana will communicate with you to get that information back to us. And, uh, that's the end of it.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Hey, Rick.
Thanks.
All right. So, um, with that in mind, uh, once again, I would like to issue an apology for, um, losing my temper. I should not have done that. And, um,
You shouldn't have put your finger
You're right, absolutely. I should not have done a number of those things. So I do apologize, uh, to, uh, the board and to, uh, those who are watching. Mine, uh, Alana, did we get any further public comments from? No, we did not, okay. Uh, with that, uh, stated, then I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
And then a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.